Contribute, they can go ahead and do that. And I think they're pretty familiar with the mute unmute situation.
Okay, perfect. Is there any names I should be on the lookout for? I can make sure to have them or bump them up?
Drew Minor and Greg Johnson.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, thanks.
Hi, Michael, can you hear me?
Hi, Councilman, yes, I can hear you.
Okay, great. Alright, well, so it is high noon, so. Welcome to the January fourteen twenty twenty two work session to receive a presentation of Crow Creek Revival and Steam Restor- Stream Restoration. Uh, this meeting is open to the public, however, no public comment will be taken. So what we'd like to do is I have an itinerary here, but I don't see Pete on here yet, so. Why don't we go ahead and start with Dina? And Dina, would you like to take questions after or during your presentation?
Thank you, Councilman Roybel. We can go ahead and take um questions during the presentation. Um, so I'm just gonna introduce myself real quickly. Um, I'm De- Dina Eganhoff. I'm part of the spokesperson for um Crow Creek Revival. Call ourselves CCR, um because we prefer to have some music background uh with our our stream restoration aspect also. So I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen and start up today's presentation. Are you able to see my pr- um my presentation right now?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. Alright, so I just wanted to give a very quick overview about Crow Creek Revival. Um, and kind of where we are. So the current condition of Crow Creek is pretty dismal. Um, we see mainly all four food major food groups um within the stream itself. And we have a tendency to um have cleanups on a regular basis. Um, we've been a little bit paused with COVID, but however, we're um progressing forward still to make sure we have these cleanups. Because we know this is a fantastic resource for our community, and it's a hidden treasure within an urban environment. Um, CCR has already put together a master plan, which covers our goals, which is over twenty-five miles of waterways. And we provided recommendations to improve water quality. To return to um Crow Creek to a multifunctional um stream channel. And increase communities' connections to our waterways. And improve the educational and access to Crow Creek and its tributaries. Just because her name is Crow Creek um Revival, it doesn't mean that's just limited to Crow Creek. It's Crow Creek and all its tributaries. That are essentially running through um Round Top all the way to Herford um Reservoir Number Two. Um, we were been focusing on phase one of our project, which is a one point two mile section from Happy Jack Road to Lincoln Way. We've already completed a hundred percent design from Happy Jack Road. So essentially, up here at the very top from Happy Jack Road, all the way um to uh Westland Road. Um, the documents have been developed. Um, we were ready to um start implementation. And we came across an emerging contaminant in this particular area of concern. In conjunction while that was occurring, we also um was contacted by the Corps of Engineers for this wonderful funding opportunity. So we essentially kind of put everything on pause, and um that's where we are in the terms of the phase one. Um, just to give you again an overview of our vision. Um, the vision is simple as your ABCs. So A for access for public enjoyment. So getting people down to the creek in a safe environment. Um, allowing them to enjoy that access, whether they're biking alongside the trail. They're physically getting their feet wet, or potentially even catching some um fish, or just exploring that particular area. Our B is boosting water quality. Water quality is pretty poor in this area. You can see these two pictures. You can see how muddy it is versus what we want to see is a nice clear creek. Um, a function of water, um essentially in creek systems is to move sediment. And provide good water quality for sustainability for habitat. And here's our preliminary, um part of our preliminary design, um that you can kind of see for that phase one approach. Um, another vision is our C, which is create habitat. So again, um seeing what we can do in terms of increasing habitat for our wildlife, for aquatic species. And um just again, treating the the creek as it should be, a haven amongst an urban environment. Um, some more support is always needed for Crow Creek Restoration. Um, funding opportunities, of course, is one of them. Uh, just to give you an estimate, a mile of stream restoration could potentially cost about a million dollars. Just because it is within an urban environment and urban setting. And um again, our goal is to uh revitalize over twenty-five miles of streams. We do not anticipate to do all of this in a year or two or ten, but we will persist and keep um getting it done. Um, so I wanted to pass this along um to our next presenter. Um, which is Jeff from the Corps of Engineers. Um, again, we at CCR had put a lot of due diligence. We actually helped write some word, um some some uh language within the um Word of Bill. Um, with from a congressional level to make sure that Crow Creek was on the radar. And so this is a golden opportunity, once in a lifetime. Um, so I wanted to present it over to Jeff, just to talk about section two oh six and this funding opportunity.
Okay, and Dina, um I see Councilman Labor's on. So if he wanna need himself and do his presentation real quick, then we'll run into Jeff, okay?
Sounds great.
Councilman Labor.
Howdy. Well, thanks a lot. I running just a little bit late here, but I did wanna, before we got into the uh presentation from the Corps. Really talk about all the effort that's gone into this and how the importance of our long-term effort. If you go back in the city of Cheyenne, you can go back a hundred years. And see that uh William Demming, which is Demming Drive today. Wanted to see us improve and and really make the creek the asset to the community that it can be. Over that period of time, many things have happened, but we've consistently tried to utilize uh that resource through, for instance, Martin Luther King Park, Optimus Park, the Greenway. And so I really appreciate everything Dina's done here. She's really been the leader of a fantastic group of people who are very dedicated in what we're doing. And of course, we had a devastating setback, but I truly believe that we are working on what the community needs and what the community wants. So we will just keep pressing and we'll go ahead with the presentation from the Corps unless anybody's got any questions for me.
Anyone from committee have any questions for Mr. Labor? Okay, and any questions for Dina? Okay, seeing that, Jeff, are you ready?
Yeah, I am, Mr. Roybel. Let me share my screen here. Okay. Putting it in presenter mode, can you guys see that?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, well, my name's Jeff Greenwald. Um, I'm a planner and a project manager with the Omaha District Corps of Engineers. I'm the project manager for the uh New Start Section two oh six study that we received for Crow Creek. I've had conversations with some of the CCR folks and uh some members from the city and the Cat County Conservation District the last year or so. And I can tell there's a lot of enthusiasm for this effort in the community, which is great. Personally, I get excited about these projects, as do other people within the Corps, because we get to partner with communities and do good things in their community. So I'll just jump in here. I've got about twelve slides. And the pre- purpose of this presentation is to give you an overview of our Section two oh six program. And talk a little bit about the phases within that program. There's primarily two main phases that we'll talk about. And then if it's something that uh the city wishes to proceed with, uh in terms of partnering with the Corps of Engineers. Um, I'll give you some of the next steps that you can think about um as we adjourn. And then we'll take questions, obviously. So just wanted to show you uh some pictures from other Section two oh six and ecosystem restoration efforts that the Corps of Engineers has uh worked on with communities in the upper Missouri River Basin. This is a really neat project in Boulder, Colorado. Where we restored uh Boulder Creek. Uh, if you could see on the left-hand picture there, the the stream is degraded and channelized and really doesn't have any of its natural form and function. And the recommended plan that we arrived on that study was to re-meander the stream and uh create more floodplain connectivity and improve the habitat. So that's a pretty, that's a pretty great project. Um, on the right-hand side, uh some of the wetland plantings that we've uh implemented on that project are shown. The first one, first one on the left is just the initial plantings in year one. And then you can see in year three how it really uh began to establish. And you can see the wetland hydrology has really taken its place, and you're starting to see him more naturally functioning system. Here's another project that I worked on in Nebraska. This is a wetland restoration project in an urban environment. On the left-hand side, there is an Oxbow that we restored. It's one of the major creeks running through the city of Omaha. Um, and it's an historic Oxbow that we restored, and that's right after construction. So the vegetation hasn't really come in yet, and you can't really see it, but there's a trail that we constructed in the bottom right that runs over the Oxbow. Part of the neat thing with the Section two oh six authority is that we can cost-share recreation features. Um, there are some constraints on that. We can only spend up to ten percent uh the total cost of ecosystem on recreation features. But typically, that's not a major constraint when we're just talking trails and signs and benches and stuff like that. And then on the right-hand side, um this was kind of a neat part of the project. We we restored this large wetland. And you can see there's a, it's hard to see really, but there's an embankment in the background, and there's a drop structure there that allows the local natural resource managers to maintain water levels at whatever level they want. Based on what their management needs are. And then they've also got a boardwalk running through this that was part of the project before we worked on it. But anyway, just some quick examples for you to see. These are, these are usually uh really well-received by communities that we work in. Um, so I wanted to just give you an overview of the continuing authorities program. It's a uh, it's a suite of authorities like Section two oh six that are standing authorities that um give the Corps of Engineers the ability to study and build water resource projects. Without going to Congress for any authorization to partner with communities or authorization to construct. So we don't have to, we don't have to get anything authorized in a Word of Bill. Like we do for some of our larger, specifically authorized projects. They tend to be smaller scale, um because there's federal limits on how much we can spend. Uh, and just typically, they're site-specific, um which makes them a little bit less complex than when you're talking about large watershed uh studies. Uh, and then they also do have an expedited approval process, which is great. We don't have to go to headquarters, U.S.A., for any approvals. As long as we stay within the the uh the, I guess, the templates in our agreements and but yeah, that's those, those are rare situations. So yeah, we don't have to go to headquarters. We go to our division office for approval. And specifically here on Section two oh six, it gives the Corps of Engineers authority to plan, design, and build projects to restore aquatic ecosystems. The purpose is to restore degraded habitats to benefit fish and wildlife resources. Um, the first phase of the Section two oh six process is the feasibility study phase. And it's cost-shared fifty-fifty, so the federal government splits the bill with the local sponsor on the study. Uh, and then at the end of the study, you get to an approved report. And you start at the next phase, which is the design and construction phase. And that's cost-shared sixty-five thirty-five, and so it's a little bit better deal for the local sponsor. Sixty-five percent federal, thirty-five percent non-federal. And then I mentioned uh federal limits on participation. It's ten million dollars is the maximum federal uh share on a study like this, or I should say an overall effort like this. That includes the feasibility study costs and the design and construction costs. Um, so like I mentioned, all projects initiated under the CAP authorities involve a feasibility study to evaluate and recommend a solution and then design and construction. And the great thing is, you guys have gone through all the appropriate steps to initiate one of these studies. Uh, the way that they're initiated is we get letters of request from communities saying, you know, hey, we've got this water resource problem. We want the Corps of Engineers to, you know, come in and help us, you know, come up with the right solution to fix it. Uh, so we received letters of request in January eighteen, two thousand and eighteen from the Laramie County Conservation District and the Cheyenne Board of Public Utilities. So that really is what initiated us on our end to begin uh working from the Omaha District level up through our division and headquarters to get this study initiated and funded. And the good news is, in February of twenty twenty-one, headquarters gave us permission to begin the study. So the first step in um getting the study moving is uh to complete what we call a federal interest determination. And and I'll talk about it in a minute here, but after this, we actually put the scope of work together. And the nice thing about this first part of the feasibility phase, where we're doing the federal interest determination and the scope of work. It's all federally funded, up to a hundred thousand dollars. And we typically get through the federal interest determination and the scope of work with that initial hundred thousand. So there's no, there's no cost sharing on this part of it, which is great. Um, so this is where we're at. The federal interest determination is a, it's a short report. It's like two or three pages at the bottom end, up to like ten pages. It summarizes the general study area. The problems with the aquatic environment in that study area that we're trying to solve. The significance of the aquatic resources being restored. Likely alternatives that we would assess, so. Um, wetlands creation or rerouting stream channels, creating wetland buffers, stream channel buffers, things like that. Um, we would talk through those with you folks to determine what the likely alternatives are and include that in the report. And then it also needs to summarize the the likely local sponsor, like have we identified a local sponsor for this study? And typically, it's a unit of local government. Somebody who can cost-share the study with us, sign an agreement and match funding. And then obtain necessary real estate interests for per- for implementation. And that's kind of a key one, uh because the local sponsor needs to own all of the lands uh or have um necessary uh real estate interests in those lands that we're going to con- construct the project on prior to implementing the project. So once we get through that federal interest determination. And we begin working on what we call a project management plan. This is our scope of work. It's really an interdisciplinary effort. We've, we typically have uh teams of, I'd say, five to eight or nine people, depending on the size of the study. Uh, and it ranges in disciplines from planning to environmental resource specialists to economists. To geotechnical engineers, stream restoration engineers, cost engineers, real estate specialists. So we get that group of people together that's necessary to scope the study out. And they become the team, and we will also work with the sponsor. To shape that scope of work and that project management plan. Uh, so that it matches the vision that you folks have for the study, as well as the required resources that the Corps needs to complete it. And it would outline what we call work-in-kind contributions. This is a uh uh important concept for the local sponsor. Um, this is, these are things that you do as part of the study that you get cost-sharing credit for. So if the city of Cheyenne wants to or has capability to take on certain engineering and environmental analyses, then you don't, you know, that that becomes uh what we call work-in-kind, and it lowers the amount of cash that you have to bring to the table to s- to cost-share the study, because you get credit for it as part of your cost share. Um, the third step is to sign the feasibility cost-sharing agreement. So this is an agreement between the non-federal sponsor, in this case, the city of Cheyenne and the Omaha District. Uh, the Omaha District Commander Colonel Himes would sign it. Um, I've seen mayors sign it. Uh, I've seen county commissioners sign it. Um. Yeah, from the local sponsor perspective, I think you have some latitude and, you know, who would be the right person, but typically, you know, it's the it's the decision-making, making official. Okay, so I'm gonna move into the feasibility sta- phase here, which is a fifty-fifty cost-share portion of this effort. Um, you can, like I said, you can contribute your share in cash or work-in-kind. Typically, it's a balance. Um, I mean, actually, I'd say it's either the sponsor, in my experience, the sponsors will provide all cash, or it's a, it's a, it's about, it's a split in some fashion. Um, it it just depends on how in much interest you have in contributing uh resources to the study other than cash, and we would talk through those as part of the scoping phase. These are some more examples of uh work-in-kind. So you could do habitat surveys. Um, environmental compliance work, engineering analyses, public meeting uh assistance. And things like that. Um, so after we signed the agreement for the study, uh we're off and running. Um, typically, these studies, we aim for a twelve-to-twenty-four month study timeframe. Um, the nice thing is that the federal funding is pretty reliable. Once we sign an agreement, we get a constant stream. Um, we wouldn't request your cost share all at once. You could, you could provide it incrementally over the study. But we do have to have uh matching non-federal funds uh in order to execute the federal funds. And then we have guidance that we follow. Just, just for your awareness, you know, we do have uh regulations that require us to sort of analyze things a certain way. And justify them. We have to justify any recommendations based on habitat outputs. And we have to sort of ask this question on an ecosystem restoration study. Is this, is the investment into this project worth the habitat outputs that we're going to receive? And uh, there's a, there's some modeling that goes into that. Uh, obviously, there's some, a cost uh estimating exercise, and we're comparing a range of alternatives to pick the best one. Uh, we, we follow the six, a six, a six-step planning process. Um, that is similar to some other federal agencies that do water resource development projects. Uh, and then we do NEPA compliance with uh any sort of effort like this. Um, I did want to show you kind of just an example. This, these numbers are just made up. But maybe this will benefit you in kind of picturing how this looks from a from a ledger standpoint, I guess. So the feasibility study could cost, let's say, it costs a million bucks. Um, that's probably uh fair number to start on, you know, eve- with any study. Um, it could be less than that. In this case, uh we'd have to get into it, but the federal share would be five hundred thousand, the non-federal share would be five hundred thousand. And then the does, design and implementation phase would be, let's say it's five million bucks to construct uh the recommended plan. Uh, at sixty-five percent, there's the federal share, three point two five million, and there's the non-federal share, one point seven five million. So the total non-federal uh contribution is two point two five million. Uh, if you look at just the feasibility study, you could potentially have uh hundred and fifty thousand dollars of work-in-kind, which would reduce your cash um contribution to three hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, for the design and implementation. Uh, that number, like we said earlier, is one point seven five million. You could, you get credit for your real estate. So I mentioned earlier that you have to, the sponsor has to acquire all the real estate. Um, you might already own it, so you might not actually have to buy that land, but you still get credit for it in the cost sharing. So let's say you, you just, you already owned it, and it's worth five hundred thousand. So that comes out of your cost sharing for the designing implementation phase, so you'd be on the, for a smaller number. So if you look at that in terms of the total, uh, the total cost for the non-federal sponsor is two point two five million. You may only need one point six million in the, in this case. And then you're contributing the other through work-in-kind and real estate. Uh, so just a kind of an example of uh, you know, how this may look. From sort of cradle to grave, if you will. So I put these timelines together for this presentation, and hopefully these uh
Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
This is Greg. Um, one thing, uh, can you go back to that last slide for just a second?
Sure.
One thing that I would offer, um, just, you know, is habitat-type feasibility studies. They tend to be a little bit more efficient than, say, flood risk management-type feasibility studies, because the teams are a little bit smaller. So, I mean, I think these numbers are really good in terms of just illustrating nice round numbers for the math and just give people an idea of order of magnitude, kind of how the cost-sharing might work for the feasibility in the um construction, but, you know, the specifics of that would be the stuff that we would work out through the scoping process in partnership with the city and the, you know, CCR and the other partners. Over.
And Greg, if you don't mind, would you uh identify yourself?
Yeah, can, um, let me try turning my uh video on. Can you see me? I don't know if you can see.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm Greg Johnson. I'm the chief of the Plan Formulation and Project Management Section in the Corps of Engineers Omaha District. So Jeff is one of my senior project managers. He works for me. Um, my background is hydraulic engineering, uh but I've done planning and project management for the majority of my career. Um, so I, you know, I have quite a bit of experience in this. Jeff has a ton of experience in it as well. But we're always learning and and like from my perspective. And I was gonna, I was gonna wait to chime in, but I decided to chime in on the cost-share part. Um, a couple of the things that resonated with me from the earlier part of the discussion is um, for us, every project that we do in Omaha District. Um, we are, we are absolutely committed to trying to find win-wins with our partners, so that ultimately, the project is treated as a community asset, because if the tree, if the community embraces it as an asset. The assurance to the government that it's gonna maintain its function in into the future is much higher. Um, and your ability to continue to leverage the resources that you might need from, you know, your constituents for um ongoing operation and maintenance will be easier as well, so um that, that, that uh characterization as a community asset is something that I, that really resonates with me on every project that we do. Um, and so, you know, we are definitely, um, like, we got the money, you know, almost a year ago. And we have been kind of working through trying to understand this, this contamination issue and and kind of how we wanted to proceed, but I um, I really do look forward to working with everybody and and kind of finding, uh, kind of finding an appropriate size project and an appropriate location and kind of seeing what we can do. Um, over, does that help?
It does. It, Greg, I got a quick question for you. The Dina earlier alluded to the fact that Crow Creek, uh, we were looking about twenty-four miles of Crow Creek. So with the feasibility study, does that just do this, the one mile of project we have looking in front of us?
It could, we can shape it kind of however, um, however people want to look at it, you know, it can be, um, it can be a ideally, we want to come out of the feasibility with, with at least one project. And we could potentially recommend, although it's pretty atypical, we could potentially recommend multiple projects that would be funded independently um over some period of time. Um, but, you know, if, if we want to focus the study on a specific site or area, um, we certainly can scope it that way if it makes more sense to take a broader look and kind of see what floats to the top. Um, we can do that as well. So I, I'm not super familiar with um, the Crow Creek area and the tributaries. Um, but, you know, I think as we work through the scope, we can definitely kind of iron that so that out if, if that helps.
Okay, and ju- and just another follow-up on that is we, let's say, as you said, we, we find a project that floats to the top and we've been approved on it and everything. They've done all the legwork. So if we finish that project and we want to go to a second project, do we have to go through the same, um, same process or since we were approved initially, are we on the list to be approved again?
Very good question. Uh, um, I would say that we could do some legwork on that. The core treats each project as kind of an independent entity in terms of a funding de- decision. So like, um, you know, we, you, I think you requested this study back in twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen. It took a couple of years for headquarters to decide to fund it, even though we asked every year, we asked the very first year to get it funded. Um, there's quite a bit of competition within the program. So I think if we, um, if we've done a broader study that has multiple projects in it, the risk to the core is, is lessened when we ask for money for the second project because we know it's, we know it's a project that's viable versus, you know, we do one focused study and we finish it. And then we go ask for the second study that may or may not produce a viable project. If we've, if we've identified two or three viable projects and we're going to fund them and, you know, over time incrementally. Um, I think it's, I think it's possible. I would say it's atypical within our, within our agency, but it's not, it's, but we have that very, we have that very um kind of strategy playing out in, in Greeley right now on the Cache La Boudoir. We have a project there that was approved, sixteen million dollar project that was approved. It had five um, sites in it. We're finishing up construction on the first site. Um, we're working with the community on, or actually the first two sites. Uh, we're working with the community on whether they want to pursue the third site. One of the sites has really probably fallen off of the table because of um oil and gas development in the area. Um, so we'll kind of see which, which ones we do going forward. But um, that would be one advantage of doing the broader would be that you could, you could incrementally um seek the funding for each of those projects because they would all be approved projects. Um, if that makes sense.
Royball, um, if I may interject real quickly, um, I'm not sure if Greg is aware, but we did get contacted by um DC, um, essentially asking how we're doing on Crow Creek project and if more money needed to be appropriated towards the project. So we do have support at the congressional level um right now for this, um, this project. And they're still very interested in what we're doing and how we can be supported for the community of Cheyenne. So I just wanted to interject that um quick section. And then also, um, we're probably not going to be looking necessarily for um funding opportunities for the first phase that we've already designed. Because we've already gotten to that hundred percent design, but we can, we can talk about that more when we go through the scope of services.
I appreciate.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hey Jeff, you have anything else, sir?
Yeah, a couple more slides. Uh, just wanted to give you guys a kind of an idea of the timeline of these, these efforts. Uh, for the feasibility phase, um, usually we, we think, you know, we like to take about four months or less to complete the federal interest determination. I think in this case, we could probably get that done pretty quickly if, if the decision was from the community was to proceed. Um, and then once that's approved by our division office, we would proceed with scoping out the study. And that's pulling together that multidisciplinary team and working with the sponsor to develop the scope of work. Uh, and then that ends with signing the feasibility cost sharing agreement. And that phase would probably take about four months, uh, give or take. And then for the feasibility study itself, um, kind of like Greg said, if the ecosystem restoration studies can be a little bit more streamlined. So I think we would try to be aggressive and aim for the twelve to fifteen month type study. Um, but we would just have to, you know, see what uh kind of makes sense based on the complexity of the effort that we're looking at. Um, yeah, like if we're looking at one specific site, it's probably a smoother, quicker study if it's a more of a broad study where we're looking at the entire twenty-five mile reach plus tributaries, it's probably a little bit longer study. Uh, the main milestone that we have in these studies is called the tentatively selected plan meeting. That's an important meeting because the sponsor and the, the Omaha district team uh, host a meeting for our division office uh, where we talk about uh what our tentatively recommended plan is and essentially get the thumbs up from them before we start the final review and approval of the dis- of the decision document. Um, so we did want to talk a little bit about our, how we handle hazardous, toxic and radioactive waste. We've got an, an engineering regulation that we follow. Um, the bottom line on the regulation is that, uh, like any construction that we are proposing should avoid any sort of contaminated areas. Uh, that's like kind of the number one principle. Um, so we look to avoid any, so we do what we call a phase one environmental site assessment right out of the gate on a study and it's kind of just doing your due diligence on, are there, have there been any oil spills or any underground storage tanks leaking? Um, things like that so that we can uh do our best to avoid those areas. Um, the core, you know, doesn't want to award a construction contract for cut, you know, contractors to go work in contamin- contaminated areas. Um, and, you know, there's just too much liability there. So we're really looking at avoiding the circular regulated stuff, um, and then figuring out if there's other stuff that we need to avoid. Um, and then another key for, for how we handle this is it, for cost shared projects, the local sponsor is the party that is responsible for ensuring that we have a clean site. So if we don't find anything or if there's nothing present, then that's great. We just move forward with the planning and, and recommending a plan. If we do find something and you still want to move forward in, you know, on that part of the project site, um, it would be incumbent on the sponsor to uh clean that site before we move to construction. And that would be a hundred percent non-project cost, so there'd be no cost sharing credit for those types of actions. Um. So, let's see here. So, I mean, in this case, like, we've been made aware of some potential PFAS, PFOA contamination that could be present in Crow Creek. Um, it's a pretty, it seems like it's a new contaminant. It's maybe not, um, recognized or regulated by state and federal regulatory agencies. So we really don't have targets for cleanup. Um, so I think that's a risk, you know, that's just, we would, if we move in, we move into a study and we're going to do any work in an area that has PFAS or PFOA, I think the core and the sponsor should just go into it with eyes wide open and understand that, you know, we don't know exactly how we're going to resolve it. Um, and we can work through that together. Um, I think another way to manage that risk is if you, there are tributaries that feed into Crow Creek that maybe don't have this contamination, we could focus our efforts in those areas. Uh, just because they're probably less likely to have, uh, whatever, whatever the source of this is um, upstream on Crow Creek may not have, you know, may not have made its way into the tributaries. Um, so that's something to think about as you think about like where you want to focus the study to, in my opinion.
Hey Jeff?
Yep.
One thing, one thing I would add on, um, on that is even though the quote unquote cleanup um, is a non-federal sponsor responsibility. We can cost share characterization to understand exactly what is there as during the feasibility phase.
Right.
That is allowable. So like, um, so you know, that's something that we'll need to discuss when we put the scope of, the scope of work for the study together. If, if there is, uh, if we're going to be looking at areas that potentially have that risk, uh, we would likely want to include some scope to do some, you know, some additional characterization of, kind of what's going on, um, and understand that better.
Yeah, yeah, we can cost share phase one environmental side assessment. We can cost share phase two, which is um, more involved work where you're going out and sampling areas and sending it to a lab. So that Greg's right, that's a good point. So a little bit about the design and implementation phase as we get to the end of these slides here. Um, once we get through an approved feasibility report, we would uh participate in the final design and construction. Typically, we design these uh in-house in the core and we award a contract through our contracting processes to a through like a request for proposal process. Um, at the beginning of this phase, though, we would enter it into another agreement with the local sponsor. We call it a project partnership agreement. And that would just, it's just another cost sharing agreement that we sign. Um, once that's signed, you know, the sponsor typically begins the process of acquiring all the lands, easements, rights of way, relocations, disposal areas, all those real estate interests that need to be acquired that we would have identified during the feasibility study would need to be pursued. Uh, and then, like I said, we usually award a construction contract through an RFP process. Um, once we get the contract, the project built for ecosystem restoration projects, we do what's called monitoring and adaptive management where we, we look at, um, is the project functioning uh over time and developing as intended? And are we getting the benefits that we, we, we thought we would get uh during the feasibility study? Uh, that's a cost shared effort. That's a requirement in our guidance. Um, we develop an operation and maintenance manual. Uh, for ecosystem restoration projects, these aren't, you know, I think of it relative to like a, to like a levee, a levee project or a flood risk management project where you're maintaining a levee. It's usually not that intense for an ecosystem restoration project, right? It's, you know, are, are, did we have any structures? Are they operating all right? Uh, the vegetation coming in, is the hydrology the way that we anticipated, things like that. Uh, and then once we hand the project over, um, the uh sponsor is responsible for maintaining the project uh over the life of the project. Kind of a similar schedule slide for you here. We sign the, the agreement at the beginning, sponsor attains the real estate. And then, you know, during that time, we're designing it. The design in it, in itself, you know, I think is a year is a kind of a safe assumption if you're thinking about how long it would take to get through that and award a contract. Um, depending on how complicated or complex the construction is, uh, you might need more than a year to build it, but I think a year is also a good uh assumption for the construction duration. Um, these are just kind of examples. Again, each project's a little different. So if you want to proceed with the section two oh six, here's my recommendation on next steps. Um, yeah, I guess, think some more about what portion of Crow Creek or its tributaries you'd like to restore. Um, thought the discussion earlier about looking at the entire study area, the twenty-five miles and tributaries and coming up with multiple projects and recommending it that way is interesting. I think we probably need to do a little legwork, like Greg said, to see how that would look. Um. Typically, we get like a project manager or somebody from the sponsor who uh kind of becomes my counterpart and works with me through the federal interest determination and the scoping phase. Um, there's not as much involvement in the federal interest determination uh as there it would be like during scoping. But it is good to have someone assigned from the city who could work with us and then work with us to complete the FID, the scope of work, and then sign a cost sharing agreement. Um, our goal would be to get this done by the end of our fiscal year, which is September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. And I think that kind of lines up with the timelines I was showing you earlier on the first schedule graph. Well, that's all I've got. Are there any questions?
Any questions from committee for Jeff? Okay, Jeff, I actually have one. During, during the feasibility study, is it common in your projects to identify the source of contamination or contaminants?
Um, usually, we, we do have an idea. So when they do a phase one environmental site assessment for a planning study, it's, it's follows a, an ASTM regulation. So it's not a federal sort of um process guidance. It's not specific to just the federal government. It's, it's like an industry-wide um uh effort or, uh, I guess, uh, regulation, I guess you would call it. Um, so what they do is they, they run what's called a EDR report, which is a environmental data resources, which it's a group that pulls all known contamination from federal and state databases into one place. And so it get, ends up giving you a list of all the known contamination in the area that you specified. And then we'll go through it and we'll look at like, what are the ones that are like flagged by the EPA or flagged by the Wyoming Department of Environmental Quality as hazards to health and to human and health uh safety? Or hu- health and, sorry, working through a cold here. I'm having a hard time thinking of the terminology. Um, basically, which ones are of concern? And then we look, we take a closer look at those ones. And usually you can tell like, if one of them was lo- located by like a historic gas station, like, oh, this underground storage tank was associated with this gas station. So you could probably discern like what the source was of the contamination through that, just reading those reports. Um, but we don't do like a, yeah, I don't, I don't know. I don't know that we we go too much above that. We, we do, there is part of that regulation that requires us to do a site visit and do interviews. Um, if, if there are uh people that work at certain areas that are available to do interviews about the contamination. Um, so we, we probably would have an idea of the source to answer your question, just through that, working through that process.
But the, but the intent is not to identify the sources, to identify the extent of the potential problem so that we can either avoid it or deal with it.
Any further questions from committee? Gentlemen, thank you for your time. Dina, thank you for your time. I think if we're in no further questions, I think we are adjourned.
All right. Thanks, everybody.
Yes, thanks everyone.
Thank you.